All right, I am going to call our regular meeting of council to order at 6:01 PM. There we go. That's great. Thank you. We'll start with our land acknowledgement statement. The town of Colhurst is located in traditional Blackfoot and Bettersee territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of milling and caring for this land, as well as all Indigenous peoples who help shape and continue to strengthen our community. With that, we will move right into the adoption of the agenda. Council, is everybody okay with the agenda? Great. Continue on then with our public hearing that we have here. If there are no objections, we are now going to recess from our regular meeting to commence the public hearing. Being that there are no objections, I declare the public hearing for the town of Colhurst land use bylaw number 462-25 open. This public hearing is being held pursuant to the Municipal Government Act. It is being livestreamed on the town's YouTube channel and is being video recorded. The public was also invited to participate in the hearing via Zoom meetings in accordance with the recent changes maintained in the Municipal Government Act and the town's procedure bylaw. Eight members of the public have also joined this hearing, oh sorry, six members of the public have joined.
It's eight.
No, it is eight, okay. So eight members of the public have also joined this hearing via Zoom and will be provided with the opportunity to provide comments on the bylaw when the time for public input comes. This hearing and input from the public will be recorded as part of the permanent public record. Before we begin, each member of council will provide an opening statement about any information from the public that they have been privy to between the first reading and the public hearing. I am going to start at councillor Ackerman's.
Thank you. So I just firstly want to say thank you everyone for coming out tonight. And then during the period between the first reading and tonight's public hearing, I had a conversation with members of the public. During this conversation, I directed the individuals to engage with all of council through the public hearing process. I have not received any information that isn't contained in the public feedback submissions before council tonight, and I look forward to hearing from residents tonight and coming to this public hearing with an open mind. Thank you.
Okay. I'll go over to councillor Potry.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. Yes, I have, of course, as a member of the community, been involved with the community and hearing feedback online prior to the public hearing, part of the person and online comments. And I want to be clear that I approach this with an open mind and that my decision will be based solely on the information presented during the public hearing, which I'd like councillor Ackman's suggested is why I recommended many of you would come tonight to save here for everyone to hear. I'll make every effort to ensure that all voices that are shared in this setting are given fair and equal consideration.
Deputy Mayor Florence?
Thank you. First of all, thank you everybody for being here and joining me tonight. I think that public engagement is very important, so I appreciate the time to be here this evening. I wanted to say that the official process and the public hearing are essential to ensuring a fair process for all residents and all members of council. My decisions will be based solely on the evidence and submissions formally presented during this hearing, remaining impartial and guided exclusively by the official record as expected. Thank you.
Councillor Caldwell is joining us online.
Thank you very much. And first, I want to say thank you for accepting me to join you on Zoom as well this evening. I know it's a process and I appreciate the people that have showed up for this. I want to say that in eighteen years on council, we are in a constant state of balancing the importance of hearing and recognizing the needs and concerns of our residents while making collective decisions. There's a reason.
Councillor Caldwell, you may be frozen. I don't know if you're still speaking. We'll carry on. We'll see if she comes back. But I guess for me too, thank you so much for being here. I don't think that we've had this many people here since the grade sixes came in for their day at here with me. So this is very exciting and I do apologize. The air conditioner decided to kind of die today as well. So that wasn't done on purpose, but we're very happy to have you here. In terms of this bylaw for myself, I have not engaged in any additional conversations outside of occasionally seeing it on social media. And as everybody has indicated, my intent here is to hear everybody today and have an unbiased view based on the information we have today. I'm assuming that councillor Caldwell was going to say something very similar, and she may come back online and you may go back to her when that starts. So thank you, council, for doing that. I'll now discuss the intent of the public hearing. The purpose of the proposed bylaw is to update and establish standards and procedures regarding the use and development of land within the municipality, to add further clarification of development standards for uses within the town, to establish new land districts with prospective uses for designation of land within the town, to incorporate new development standards for uses within the town, to amend the existing land use district map to reflect land use redesignations and new districts, and to comply with the provisions of the Municipal Government Act. The purpose of the public hearing is for council to receive public input on the proposed bylaw. It is not for council to debate or to defend its contents. Questions asked of a councillor by a presenter will be ruled out of order. However, a council member may ask questions of public presenters if clarification is required. This hearing will be conducted in an atmosphere of decorum and respect for everyone. Raised voices, applause, speaking out of turn, personal attacks, et cetera, will not be tolerated. In accordance with the town's procedure bylaw, presenters are asked to clearly state their name for the record, to provide the correct spelling if it is required, and to state their points to council as briefly and concisely as possible. Each member of the public wishing to speak shall have a maximum of five minutes. Written submissions that have been included in the public agenda will not be read aloud. If your written submission is already on the agenda, please don't read it aloud in its entirety. You may, however, provide a brief summation of your points. So I'm now going to just ask administration to briefly summarize the late written comments that were not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. Good evening, everyone, including all the staff. A great sacrifice to be here this evening. So we received five written submissions that were received too late to be on the agenda, which we always prepare, of course, the week before so that it can be distributed. So I'll just briefly summarize those and state the names of those who have submitted them. First off, and this is in no particular order, is Brent and Louise Ailman. And their points they would like to share are they are opposed to transitional zoning for the open field behind their house at Miners Road West. They value the existing open space and views, one of the key reasons they remain in Colhurst. They're concerned that once this green space is rezoned, it will be permanently lost for future community uses. They suggest that in the next twenty years, this land could be more valuable for schools, parks, or community amenities. And they urge council to preserve the land from transitional zoning and will vote for councillors who support this stance. The next submission is from Stephen and Candice Dudley. And the points they stress are they support creating zoning, or pardon me, creating a zoning buffer between existing homes on Seventh and Eighth Street and proposed business park lands. They prefer that the land remain natural or used for public and institutional uses such as libraries, parks, schools. If rezoned to a business park, they request the prohibition of high-impact uses adjacent to homes. A buffer of a minimum twenty meters wide with a three-meter landscaped berm and trees for screening and aesthetics. And when they say three meters, they mean three meters high. They'd like to see a pathway added for connectivity and recreation purposes. And they state that the current six-and-a-half meter buffer in the proposed bylaw is inadequate. They also have provided examples from Lethbridge where well-designed berms have effectively separated residential and commercial areas. The third submission is from Dennis Cassie. And he seeks clarity on the white space, I think he meant on the map, behind Seventh Street and Forty-Fifth Avenue and would like transparent designation and opposes transitional zoning. The green space beyond the retention pond prefers that it be designated as parkland. And property behind the elementary school designated as transitional, he opposes this and wishes it to remain green space. He emphasizes the importance of preserving green space for the community. The fourth written submission is from Stephanie Dergasov. Hopefully I've said that correctly if you're here, Stephanie, or for those of you who know her. She strongly opposes rezoning for light industrial near her residence. She's concerned about impacts such as crime, chemicals, traffic, noise in a quiet residential area, and devaluation of surrounding properties. The current area includes new parks, wetlands, and a dog park, and she states those are not compatible with light industrial. She requests that a deferral of the decision until more transparent, informed, public discussions can occur. And states that her possible intent would be to leave town if the development proceeds. The fifth submission is from Rayanne Keir. She states that she supports council's proposed land use bylaw and the business park development. She argues that public participation efforts were appropriate and proportional to Colhurst's size and budget and that comparisons to Lethbridge in this regard, meaning the city of Lethbridge, are unfair. She believes that many complaints stem from a "not in my backyard" mentality. She highlights that commercial and industrial development is necessary for long-term financial sustainability and that we cannot rely solely on residential taxes. She notes that the area has been designated as a new employment area and future growth area in planning documents for over a decade. She clarifies that wetlands were primarily built for stormwater management, not intended to remain purely natural space. She urges council to base decisions on facts, long-term planning, and community needs, not on opposition rooted in misinformation. And her final point is that she sees business park development as key to Colhurst's future prosperity. And that is the end of the late written submissions. Mayor Montina, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now ask our chief administrative officer, Carleen Vetteridge, to provide her compliance report on the advertising requirements for this public hearing and to acknowledge all public written submissions received in accordance with the town's procedure bylaw.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. Notice of this public hearing was provided as follows. A mail drop was given to all mailing addresses within the town boundaries on May twentieth. The notice was published in the Sunny South News on June third and on June tenth. The information is provided on the town's website under Planning and Development and Bylaws and Policies. Two website notifications were also provided under Recent News and Public Notices on the town's website, added on May twentieth and on June tenth. It was posted on the town's Facebook page on May twenty-first, June ninth, and on June thirteenth. The notice was also provided in the June Town Newsletter, which was posted on the town's website on June third and distributed in print at the following locations: Coomin Bakery, IDA Pharmacy, Coyote Grill, Allegiant, the Colhurst Pub, the Fifty-Five Plus in the basement of Allegiant, the Colhurst High School, and at the Colhurst Elementary School. The newsletter was also advertised with the notification on the town's page on June third. Email referrals were also sent to Lethbridge County Government Department's Utility Companies and CPR. The full bylaw was made available on the town's website and a hard copy was made available in the office for inspection by anybody who would like to come in and read the bylaw. The town also received fourteen written submissions from the public on the bylaw before the submission deadline. Those submissions have all been included and published on the agenda for this public hearing. The town received five written submissions after the agenda publication deadline, which Larry just so wonderfully read, all of which have been shared with council as well. And the town received five responses from external agencies, all of which are included in the published agenda. That is my final report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we're now going to have the town senior planner, Diane Horvath. She'll present by giving an overview of the bylaw. Then what will happen is council will have the opportunity to ask any questions. This will be followed by the Zoom participants and then by any member of the public who are present and wish to speak. The senior planner will then be given the opportunity to provide any closing comments in accordance with our procedure bylaw. Small terms, over to you. Oh yeah, we'll just have one moment here. We just have, we've got a lot of technology things happening here. So it might just take us a couple moments here as we switch between screens.
Do you have a question or comment here?
Sure. Can I confirm that members on Zoom can see the presentation? Those of you who are on Zoom, I know councillor Caldwell, you're on Zoom. Can you let us know if you can see the presentation?
You betcha, yep.
Yeah, you're good? Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I'll turn it over to you, Diane.
Great, thank you, Mayor Montina and members of council. Again, to introduce myself, I'm Diane Horvath and the senior planner with the old member of the Regional Services Commission, which the town of Colhurst has been a member of for many, many years. Not a planner that is assigned to Colhurst. I've actually been assigned here since around two thousand and five. So I do have some history. What I do want to do tonight is take you through a very brief PowerPoint presentation, about twelve slides, just to give you a really high-level overview of what a land use bylaw is and then provide some other information with regards to Block X, which is sort of the, from what I've been reading, some of the, the focus of tonight's concern. So if I could get the slide presentation moved forward. See? Okay. So again, what is a land use bylaw? And again, what that bylaw is, is the primary document that details how land is to be used and what can be built on it. That's it in a nutshell. It designates each area of a municipality into zones or land use districts. And it sets out the general rules, regulations for the types of buildings, structures, and activities that can occur in each one of those zones. Why do we need one? Really, the land use bylaw is the implementation document. And all municipalities in Alberta are actually required under the Municipal Government Act or MGA. As planners like to talk in acronym, so if you hear me say it, that's what it means. It means the Municipal Government Act. And we are required to have a land use bylaw. And again, that bylaw establishes those rules and standards for land use as well as processes to be followed on how a municipality makes decisions. Come advance, please. So the process so far, what have we been doing? So council actually, previous council initiated this renewal project back in two thousand and seventeen. So we've been at this for a while. The draft bylaw was then picked up by current council in around two thousand and twenty. And through the course of this term, we have been working on reviewing it. Council did come up with a draft. They wanted to take out two consultations. So a public open house was held February twenty-fourth with fifteen community members attending along with council members. From that, there was a document called What We Heard, and that was presented to council. And it went through the feedback and provided options for council to make amendments to that draft bylaw before putting the first and final draft into the public realm for this hearing. So again, there was amendments made after that public hearing, or sorry, the public open house, I correct myself. And finally, I'll put the final dot down at the bottom. Tonight is the mandatory public hearing as required under the Municipal Government Act or MGA. Again, council will take information from this hearing and their deliberations prior to determining further readings of the bylaw. Okay, advance. Again, I'm not going to be able to get every single thing in a two-hundred-page document, so I have read some major highlights. And again, hopefully everyone's had a chance to read the document. But really, it's broken down into some major changes. So again, when was the updated administrative section? There's been some changes to the Municipal Government Act in the way that permits need to be processed and those needed to be incorporated into that administrative section. Three new land use districts were proposed to be added to the bylaw, two units, residential, business park, as well as a fusion district. There was, we added, changed, and deleted different uses in each of the land use districts. We actually created two separate standards of development. Previously, we had sort of a general one, and what we did is we tried to separate it and saying for residential uses, these are the standards of development, and for non-residential uses, we have a separate standard of development, which may have different, for example, different heights of fences. And then finally, we updated the land use district map to align with the changes within the land use bylaw itself. Thank you. So again, just to let everyone, I don't know how familiar everyone is with planning in Alberta, but land use planning in Alberta has a regulatory framework set out by the provincial government. As you can see, there is three sections to it. There's provincial mandates and regulations, there's inter-ministerial, and then there's municipal. So again, the things that fall into the provincial are the main overarching, so I've mentioned the Municipal Government Act. That's where the province and cabinet get into setting those rules. We heat it down to the inter-ministerial one, which is agreements and plans between our other municipal neighbors. So Lethbridge County, we have a plan with them. And then we have the local documents. So the town of Colhurst documents would include our municipal development plan is the top of that. Then we went down one step, would be any area structure plans that we may have. And then at the final bottom of that is the land use bylaw. So again, the way the provincial legislation is set out, everything has a hierarchy and one would prevail over the other. So we can't do something in our land use bylaw that isn't allowed, say, in our municipal development plan. So we have to, when we're doing our planning, be in alignment with all of those documents. Advance, please. So factors in preparing the land use bylaw. So again, as the land use bylaw is that implementation document, it takes the visions and goals found in those higher-level plans, including your municipal development plan and your strategic plan, and tries to put them into action or move things forward to ensure that we can have development in accordance with those higher-level plans. So I've provided a couple of notes. We did the municipal development plan in two thousand and seventeen. Again, I wanted to provide a little history because I have read some of the information provided in the comments. And I just want to make sure we have a level playing field when we start the discussion at the public hearing. So I wanted to provide a little bit of information about the area in question. And so it's known as Block X, Plan One Thirty-five LK, but I'm just going to call it Block X if that's all right. And it was actually a thirty-two acre parcel that was created in nineteen seventy-four by Lethbridge County when the land itself was outside of the boundary. And it was the location of former mining, associated mining operations. In my understanding, perhaps a shale slave pile is really what was there. Advance, please. So in two thousand and six, the town of Colhurst ended up annexing, so they went through a process with the province to annex the land. And it was done under order in council three sixteen, two thousand and six, along with four other titles. So you can see the map shows some black, so it's most of the land on the east side of the community as well as the triangle that was part of Sundance. So that all came in in July of two thousand and six. So in September of two thousand and six, the town at that time, because what happens when we annex, the land keeps the same designation of land use zoning as would be in the county, we move into the town. So we wanted to have it flipped over to the uses in the land use bylaw of the time. And in that case, under bylaw two fifty-two ninety-eight, which is the precursor to the current bylaw we're looking to replace, the land behind our Block X was actually zoned from rural urban fringe to industrial. The entire parcel was zoned industrial. So if we can move on. In two thousand and twelve, when we created the current land use bylaw, council of the day determined to designate portions of that land from industrial. Half of it would go to, as you can see, green on the screen, half would go to parks and recreation. Half would go to public and institutional. And that really was to accommodate at the time the existing storm pond, which has now since been updated and amended and augmented, as well as the construction of the existing town shop that was being removed from down on First Street out to that particular location. I believe at the time, we also had where we were dumping branches and we had sort of a green recycling area there as well. But I just want to be very clear that at no time has the entire Block X ever been zoned for parks and recreation. I just want to be clear on that so we know what we're talking about. Final slide, I think, is just our current one. So again, the proposed land use map for the current bylaw four sixty-two twenty-five proposes to designate the surplus land outside of the existing storm, augmented storm pond. And parcel W, so that's a new number, but everything up there has letters. W, if anyone's familiar with, that's the old Lethbridge County shop. And their land is currently industrial and we were moving that to business, in our business park. And then the residual of the land, which is known as parcel V, it was going from, again, current business industrial to business park. So again, just that's what's on the table this evening. So I don't know if council has any questions about any of that history. I have provided, and hopefully, if anyone wants to look it up, all of those orders in councils. And information is available online as well. So hopefully you have a chance. If you want to double-check me, that information is there.
Great, thank you, Diane. I will go to council to see if there is any questions. Councillor Caldwell, I can see you on the screen too, so if you have any questions, you can either put your hand up or use the raise hand feature. But I'll just start in the round here to council. Done? All right. And we will carry on here. I realize that I kind of went off my script a little bit, but I'm going to go back now. So just to give some more context, following the close of the public hearing, council has several options which include adopting or defeating the bylaw, amending the bylaw before considering second and or third reading, asking administration for more information and or amendments before bringing the bylaw back for another public hearing, or delay making a decision until further readings of the bylaw until a future council meeting. So in the event that council chooses not to consider the second and third reading of the bylaw, it is very important for everyone to note that after this hearing, no further comments or input to council on this bylaw is permitted as that would be contrary to the principles of procedural fairness. All input to council on the bylaw that anyone wishes to make is to be provided during this public hearing. You've done your presentation? Thank you. That was excellent. We will now go over to our Zoom participants to provide their verbal input to council. I do have a list here for those of you who are online, and it has been done in alphabetical order. And so the first person that we have speaking to us tonight is Crystal Forbes. And so, Crystal, you're welcome to provide your remarks. And you have five minutes, which I will be keeping track of here. Just see if Crystal is here. All right. I will move on to the next person, Dean Switzer. I see you, Dean, that you are online, so you're welcome to unmute yourself, and you have five minutes.
No, I think I'm fine here.
You're basically filling in the blanks here really well, so I don't have anything at this time, but thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move to Holly Shepherd. Holly, if you're online, you can Holly, if you're online, you can unmute yourself, and you have five minutes to provide your remarks.
Sorry, I couldn't figure out how to unmute myself. Yeah, I just live across this, the street there, and I really don't want this bylaw to go forward. I do agree with having restrictions and buffers and things like that, and not it, like being heavy industrial or anything like that, but I really think that there would be better places for this that's farther away from, like, a lot of residential areas. Even if it was something that could go towards the town, like a daycare, you know, or a blast program, or things for, like, kids and teenagers and young families to attract them out. So, yeah, that's my comment, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Council, if you, if you have any clarifying questions for any of our presenters this evening, you're welcome to, to put those forward too. All right. Our next person is Jennifer Radisic. Jennifer, if you're there, you're welcome to unmute. If not, I will move to Kevin Skinner.
Howdy, can you everybody hear me? Good?
Yes.
I'll make this quick. No, thank you for everything, it's been very informative and everything, and kind of like everybody else, I guess, living on my street, I just was initially concerned with, like, a lot of noise pollution, air pollution and things of that nature, but after kind of going over the different rezoning elements and stuff versus the discretionary and non-discretionary businesses and types that are coming in, it makes a little bit more sense. I do still have some concerns with how close it is to my home on Seventh Street, through the back alley, and I just kind of, if we are, and I just have maybe some clarifying stuff, if that road would remain an alley, if we would be building roads through that area. And then when you draw, you build stuff like industrial areas, like not necess, full industrial, but like storage units, things of that nature, you can attract more foot traffic and stuff through the neighborhood, and it always brings more of a risk of crime and stuff like that too, which is concerning, living on the outskirts of a town. Because usually the places on the outskirts can be more attractive to criminals and things if they can't maybe break into one place, and maybe I'll try the next place, we're close, right? So I just have some issues and concerns maybe now with, like, if we're going to have more of a police presence and stuff, because I know that's always been an issue in the town, it just makes me a little bit nervous when it comes to that kind of an element, and how far exactly away it will be from my home and stuff, and things that. But thank you for everything else, everything else has been really great, and that's what I'll have to add, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I'll just check with council, is there any clarifying questions?
Kevin, you mentioned, will it remain, you were asking about some clarification about will it remain an alley or a road or something behind your place? Just elaborate on that a little more, what was the concern?
Yeah, I just wondered whether, like, if you're going to build, rezone, develop all that land behind, and it looks like it is really close, I just wondered if that would eventually change that kind of traffic to be an alleyway, or if we would be, like, changing any of the road system through there, because that's a concern too. If it's going to be a bit, if it's going to be a main road or more have a high traffic area right behind my house, that just causes concern too, I just kind of was curious how much of a buffer there would be for roads and stuff like that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Kevin, very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Levon Dewick. Levon, if you're there, you're welcome to unmute yourself, and you have five minutes. If not, I'll move on to Lori Harrison.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Lori.
I apologize, I'm at a conference and I'm bundled down in a corner, so I'm sure I look really funny too. So, okay, here we go. I just want to note that on the news recently, I listened to a politician talking about the importance of compromise in today's world. Three weeks ago, I believe I would have been here in a different mindset than I am tonight, but a recent meeting helped me have a greater understanding of the town's vision, and because of that, I've thought a lot about compromise. I realize that this is my last chance to talk to all of you, because as I know as a former government employee, today our opportunity to share our ideas, thoughts, and ask our questions on this is over once this hearing ends. Today I'm asking for compromise from the town, as I realize that the politician is right, we need to find compromise, and as I feel I'm open to it since that meeting, I hope you hear us tonight and read the letters and other submitted documents as you move forward after this hearing is over, and as you move from fact finding and listening into your decision-making roles. Whether you wanted to or not, or whether you intended to or not, you have created a park by the placement of the wetlands and the dog park. The number of people who walk through the area noted for rezoning to business park and who spend time walking through there every day is noticeable. I probably see it more than others, my second floor bedroom, my kitchen, my front room, and my porch all look out onto that space, so there's almost nowhere in my house that I go that I don't see the people and often their dogs in that space. The community, to generalize, doesn't seem to realize that this area is not part of the wetlands park, especially with the new dog park location, and they are now going to lose a green space, a much desired and needed space in this community. First and foremost, I do believe that changing this space away from that would be short-sighted, and I do realize it is not parks and recreation, but moving away from what it is now would be short-sighted, and moving it to parks and recreation would be better. However, I recognize that that may not be an option. And looking at other plans across the region, province, and even the country, it was found that a six and a half meter buffer is not normal between residential and, and this type of zoning. Elected officials and planners in other communities have told me that this would not be approved in their community, and as one elected official from another community told me just yesterday, you need to push back on that distance and no buffer, we would never consider approving that. Transitional zoning or buffers of at least twenty to thirty meters are the norm, a proper berm is standard, landscaping is standard. An example, right near us, is the West Lethbridge Employment Center area that was shared with me. It is similar zoning by residential, there's a thirty meter buffer with landscaping included. This minimizes impacts on sound, lighting, and traffic. This also minimizes the crime that does increase for light industrial borders residential, which is proven by much research. This would allow for the connectivity with the dog park that many people are concerned about. Many community members have expressed frustration and concern that they may have to walk through a manufacturing and light industrial area to enjoy the wetlands and then go to the dog park. Connectivity is important to this council, and it's part of the wetlands guiding principles. So adding this berm and walking path would create a nice connector to the two spaces and align with what I understand is one of council's desires, connectivity. Having been a volunteer on the wetlands committee for the past two years, I'm crushed that this is what people will experience when enjoying this park as we have envisioned it. It will minimize our potential sponsors to fund amenities that we talk about, it will take away our plan to have a space where people will travel, travel from other communities to Colhurst to enjoy. We also know that we don't have room for all the amenities, and now we will be losing the only space to ever grow this park, this much-needed green and recreational space. It adds to the feeling of Colhurst being piecemealed together. There are other places aligned with this zoning, but to save money, it's being located here. When more engagement is done and planned for the wetlands as compared to the land use bylaw, I have concerns. And then to not have told the public what is going to border the wetlands on that side during engagement seems very unfair to me. People want to have more engagement, and they want to have plain language conversations. Why aren't we doing pop-ups at events and activities, just like the wetlands committee has planned? And then there's the coal discussion. No testing has been done on that site according to the province, yet town staff believe housing isn't on, okay on that site due to health risks. Well, that comment makes me want to know where the study is that shows that, and the decision made that where my house is located is safe, because I've never known that there was apparently risk to people living on that site. Building that site up isn't healthy, and people do live there, they live six and a half meters away, so if it's not safe for people to live six and a half meters away from my house, what does that mean about where my house is located? I think a pause to do the proper work to ensure that this is not unreasonable for housing, and we know affordable housing is in desperate supply, to ensure that the houses near there are not putting residents at risk, and to map where the healthy to unhealthy lines are, to explain how community will be protected during years of excavation and movement of dirt is all needed. Finally, transitional zoning that allows for anything but light industrial manufacturing and shipping containers next to residential would be common. Allowing permitted uses only to run along the boundaries with homes and the wetlands would not only be normal, but incredibly appreciated for the community's quality of life. So I want to share that I believe you owe to voters and community members to get this right. Not only do twenty-plus houses who are directly affected by this, are they concerned, but people across the community. I'd like to ask you to pause this for further engagement and research, so that we can be sure we are making the best long-term decision for our community, and that decisions are made to minimize impacts on users of the wetlands and the residences bordering on, and the approximate sixty homes nearby that are deemed to likely be affected by whatever decisions are made with this parcel of land. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. I'm going to look to council to see if there are any questions. I see one from Ducky Mayor Florence.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I just have a question of clarification, you had mentioned, can you hear me, Lori? You had mentioned.
Yes, I can, I just, I just want, yeah, you're just kind of quiet, so.
You had mentioned in your report that, that it was about saving money to put it there, when it could go elsewhere. I wondered if you could just briefly give a little bit more information on where, about those comments.
Sorry, if I could give more information on where else the light industrial could go?
No, about, about the saving money aspect of your comments, I guess I'm just wondering for clarity.
Oh, so my understanding is that there are other areas in town, potentially, like, when I look at that map, there's other areas where it could be, but, like, for example, like, there is industrial already over on the other end of town, and, like, I look at something, okay, I'm going to stir up my own controversy here by saying it, but I'm just going to say it. We look at Miners Park, which isn't as heavily used as it could be. Why couldn't the amenities from Miners Park be relocated to this space, and then the industrial be located with light industrial, because it's already over there? But I know that removing a park and then relocating the park, I mean, there's a cost that, you know, associated with that, right? So to dig up Miners Park, turn it into industrial, and then to move some amenities over, that there would be a cost associated with that. But I also know that there's costs associated with putting in berms and landscaping and doing the right thing for the community. So I don't know for sure, like, what costs of anything are, but I would assume that this would be looked at as the easy, cheap way to go, right? Like, which is why, you know, this is being, that would be an assumption of mine.
Thank you for your clarification.
Lori, I have a question for you as well. You referenced a place in West Lethbridge, where, where were you referencing?
So there is a, if you go to the city of Lethbridge website, there's the West Lethbridge Employment Center Area Structure Plan, and that is basically the same zoning, and there is residential in there. And from what I could understand from the plan, and I did talk to one of the planners with the city to confirm, it is a thirty meter buffer with, with landscaping included between the residential and the zoning, because that's standard. And so if you just look up the, if you look up that plan on the city's website, that's where I found it. And it's near, like, the cemetery and everything, but it's called the West Lethbridge Employment Center Plan, Area Structure Plan.
Great, thank you for that. I have a question for administration regarding, have we done any testing about the safety of the land? Like, is that something that we are, are aware of?
Yes, thank you for the question, Mayor Montana. I'm going to defer this answer to Director of Operations Kevin Lewis, who's been with the town for quite some time, to provide some information on the work done on that particular parcel. Let's take a moment to have him come on, on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. In February 2013, a Phase One environmental site assessment was completed by a consultant for the town. And later that year, we did ask for a Phase Two environmental assessment. And at the consultant's recommendation, as we were looking for what the land could be used for, they recommended a, an in-depth confirmatory soil sampling, which meant that twenty-nine locations on that site were excavated down to three meters, and testing was done for that, and depths of coal, shale, clay, everything else were taken in those twenty-nine locations. So that's the two reports that we have had done by a consultant on environmental for the area.
Just to clarify, based on that, Kevin, was there any, anything that came up of that that would indicate that housing is not appropriate for, for that area?
It's an eighty-page document, but I can take a couple of the executive summaries. A few of the test sites did, had greater than Alberta Tier One guidelines for residential use, but another part of the summary states that, let me just find it here, the metal parameters with concentrations greater than the applied guidelines for ecological direct soil contact do not preclude the redevelopment of the site for industrial, commercial land use. However, worker health and safety should be considered and addressed during the development.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's two part of the summaries from, from the two reports that were done for us.
Excellent, thank you very much for that answer. I will look to council to see if there's any additional clarifying questions before we move on to our, our last presentation. If there's not, we will move on now to Marge and Shiloh Salzman. So you're welcome to unmute yourself if you are online, and you have five minutes. Just see here. In the meantime, okay, so nothing from Marge, great. I just want to make sure for everybody who was online, if you have been, we, if you hadn't had a chance to speak, if you would like to, because I know that we had some people that may not have been here right at the beginning. If not, we are going to now move into our, our in-person presentations. And so from my understanding, everybody who would like to speak at this point has been given a number. So what I will be doing here, just find this here. All right, so I'm just going to call you up by number, so what I ask is that you come and sit in the chair up front here. You do have to be in the spotlight, because people online will be able to hear you then as well. And so I request that you just say your name and then spell it, so that we can have that for the record. And again, I will give you your five minutes, if you might have some clarifying questions as well. So I will start with number one.
Great. I expected a reading.
Just talk to us, you're here, okay, just forget everybody else.
So my name is Stephanie DeRosa, the spelling is in my email, which is included. I just actually was not aware that my email would be included, so that is why I'm up here. I don't need to repeat myself, what I said in a rather clumsy manner on email. But I did want to stand kind of with the other townsfolk who have expressed their concerns about this, and I would also obviously not be in favor of this, and I would rather see schools and keep it as public institution. However, I just feel like it would detract from what Colhurst is as a community to me, which is very, like, quiet, peaceful. Like, I just moved here from Lethbridge a couple years ago, and I moved here specifically because it was more quiet and peaceful, and to do all the, like, to buy anything, like everyone else, we, most of us probably work in Lethbridge and drive by grocery stores and go to Costco anyway, because it's cheaper than what a local one would be, and if it was half an hour away, maybe we would go locally, but with the big five minutes to, I just don't see those kind of things happening. It really depends who would be going in there. And I'm wondering if there are businesses already kind of lined up waiting for that, and if so, what they would be, because some of the use things might be more preferable than others, out of, that's a big long list of things. I agree with a lot of what Lori was saying, so I don't want to repeat any of that. I do think that it might be a short-sighted use of the land rather than a far-sided use, because depending how you want the town to grow and what resources you want it to have, and you just put in this. and you just put in this beautiful park, you just are completing building a dog park, and then you're sticking industrial in between the two, which doesn't make sense to me. But if council does vote to go ahead with it, I would agree with like a huge berm space, like thirty meters with the, I don't know what the proper terminology is, but like, big and tall, all along Seventh Street and Eighth Street. And I would also propose that there would be no access from Seventh Street, or Eighth Street, that the only access would be from Fifty-Fifth Avenue and Range Road 223, which isn't connected with the houses, and that would give less traffic, hopefully, to the residential area, and maybe prevent some of the crime and the devaluing of the property, which, just from a brief internet search, and I have not done any official searches, but it does seem to detract from the value of housing. But if you do these things, like the berm space and landscaping, it seems to minimize that, mitigate it, so. And, oh, and I would want connectivity between the parks with the lake and the dog park. So somewhere in the middle, not on Seventh Street. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll just see if council has any clarifying questions.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned that you're opposed to the business park. I just want to see clarity, are you opposed to business parks in Colhurst? Or is it just the location?
Oh, just the location.
Just the location?
Yeah, there's other businesses, like that cabinet place, and the, yeah, those are great.
Yeah, I just wanted to see.
Yeah, and they're like the gas station a lot, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And it wasn't as scary as you thought it was. Can I get number two to come forward, please? Excellent.
My name is Reg. I live in the Seventh Street.
Can you say your name again?
My name is Reg.
Reg?
Yeah.
What is your, what is your last name, Reg? We just need to record it.
Coroche, A-H-O-C-H-A.
We'll just make sure that we've got that recorded.
I live in Colhurst since 2017 years. So I see a lot of it growing. So I have a question about, I live in the Seventh Street, and there is this white area. So what's going on?
Unfortunately, today, we can't actually have that conversation about what that could look like. We just need to take your feedback. And so if you have any feedback about what you're seeing there, and you can tell us more about, like, if you like it, or if you don't, or things like that, that could help us just gather that information.
Yeah, of course, I think it's absurd, the idea of a small community like this focusing in the building industry. I think everyone agrees that this town is, has a small vibe, mentality, in a good way speaking. And I think someone talked about prosperity. I think prosperity is not money, is not making money. It's going to be a lot of traffic, it's going to be, I don't, I'm not going to see kids running the bicycle and kids free-walking, because we are going to concern about semi-driving. I don't think in the long term it's going to be good for the community in general, because I live, I work in Lake Bridge, and when I come here, I drive through the farm, and it is calming my mind down, making me feel like I'm in the green area. So, you know, I feel safe here, and if someone is going to build all these businesses or light factory, or light industry, or whatever name you want to say, it's going to destroy the vibe, it's going to destroy the, you know, the warm, safe feeling of the town, and it's going to be like dysfunctional. It's going to be like something's not right in the city. You know, we were going the right way, and then we are going another way. So I oppose a hundred percent about any development of a lighting industry or focusing the recreation and the residential. And anything is good for the mental health, for people, and for well-being. Not money, not prosperity. This is my, what I'm going to say.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
Any questions?
Anything from council?
No.
Just like yourself, thank you very much. Number three.
That's me, I'll just pass for now.
You're gonna pass for now? Okay. I would look number, number four? Did you, well, do that, you can, you can do that. I will allow that, so please don't worry.
Anyways, I'm Sandy Gervais, over on Sundance Drive. And I've been here, living in Colhurst since eighty-three, so I've been here a while. I'm not sure what's, you say transitional, what does that mean?
I'm just going to need to look for process, if we can respond to that in terms of what transitional means.
If council, sorry, if, yeah.
Madam Mayor, if you feel that it will add some clarity to the thing, you can actually, because I do think it's misunderstanding what transition is.
Yes, if council's okay with that, yes, please do help us with that.
Great, if I can, thank you very much. Transitional zoning, which we have had in the bylaw for many, many years, sometimes it was called agriculture, it's those large parcels of land that are normally newly annexed, and they tend to keep the same vibe, if we would be using that word, as it would have been if it was there before. So we have the large agricultural quarter section that was annexed. It is allowed to remain to continue to farm, and that goes on. So our very, very limited uses that are proposed in a transitional zoning, and actually, one of the things that is being proposed in the new bylaw is we had a single-family house as a permitted use. It's actually now going to move to the discretionary side. So we don't have people purchasing a piece of land and putting a house that is maybe not in the right location. So what we're trying to do is keep the land in its undeveloped stage, have very little development on it until such time as a area structure plan or another plan comes in, to be able to determine what that should be. So transitional doesn't mean it's transitional housing or anything. It means it's just transitioning from agricultural land to inside the urban community.
Yeah, I'm really confused, because I've had neighbors come up to me and tell me that behind the house, they're gonna put in a light industry in there. And to me, that makes little sense, because it's right in the middle of Colhurst. Between the school and Sundance Drive is the area I'm talking about. You've got, I see you designated part of the area for wetlands, and then you've got the park closer to my place, you know, where the, you've called that transitional. So my concern is, is there a chance that that could become light industrial?
So Sandy, I think that we're looking at a different piece of land, so right behind you. We're actually looking at the park, do you know where, like the new, like the new Lakess? Like, that's the west side, right?
On the way to town.
Yeah, right, not right behind you.
Okay.
Right, because we're talking about that other area.
Okay, so I've been getting, yeah, I got guys coming up to me telling me, you gotta go to that meeting, they're gonna, you know, they're putting the industry behind you. That kind of concerns me.
Yeah, and I believe that we have, I've seen that some people, do we have some papers that actually has the map available? I don't know if you were able to grab one of those?
I looked at it, it says transitional, that was like, transitional means to me, it could be anything.
Yes, yes, let's allow Diane here.
If I can grab one more clarifying, that large parcel that's south of the school, sort of right in the center of the community, has for very many years been zoned residential.
Okay.
And what we propose is to split that, and to have the bottom half to be transitional. We don't know what we're going to do with it. And then the top half, because there is the old, might understand, the tracks and the layout of the mine, there's some contamination and some issues with that. So instead of having the idea, because people come in and say, oh, we've got this big residential parcel, it's good for development. And we don't, actually, it gives a false sense that it's actually good for, the entire thing is good for residential. So what we're saying is, no, this needs more planning. So if you wish to come and have a conversation with the municipality, but currently, that is municipally owned. So again, it's under the control and jurisdiction of the town at this point.
So basically, right now, I don't have to consider whether light industry coming in behind my house.
Nope, nothing, right now, nothing can come behind your house in transition.
Okay, and eventually, it'll probably be housing, though, is that?
Maybe.
Maybe.
You might have to come back to another one of those. We're gonna play through that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, number four.
Hey, so my name is Candace Dudley. My husband and I moved here ten years ago at the end of this month. And while the aesthetics of the town didn't drive us to buy here, we found a house we loved, with a beautiful view, which is south of Fifty-Fifth Avenue and east of Eighth Street. The area being rezoned from public institutional to business park. The new business park zoning would allow for several industrial and commercial uses that could impact adjacent residential properties and neighborhoods in a negative way. And I did send this in, so I'm just gonna kind of, just kind of jump over this. The visual impacts, we do see the fire hall from the front of our house as well. And if you get up close to it, we still can see through the privacy slats of the chain-link fence. And while we do appreciate having a fire hall in town, I would choose to live in front of it. And thankfully, that's, that's not what I have to deal with. But I just worry about that behind, thinking that privacy slats are the way to block use of chain-link fences. We're worried about noise pollution. We're worried about light pollution. I think everybody in that area, their bedrooms and their living spaces are in the back of their houses, and I think that would be an issue. Air quality and odors, definitely our property values would be at risk of depreciating with property like that right behind us or in front of us. We're worried about crime, especially as this would be more for thieves, and I think they would be more attracted to areas like that. And we're worried about our health and well-being during construction as well as after. The summer where the storm pond was being built was a very miserable year for everybody in that area. We love having the pond there, but it was, it was pretty noisy throughout that, throughout that summer. So without any changes to the proposed land use bylaw, we believe that development of the business park will have an overall negative effect on the town of Colhurst, with the highest impacts on the quality of life of property values being to residents that face or back onto this area. So we request that town council reconsider this portion of the land use bylaw to eliminate or postpone rezoning of this land to business park. Instead, we encourage town council to continue to explore other areas, which I love what Lori said, I think that would be great. I'd love to have that behind me, as opposed to what, you know, you know, companies that are storing their, you know, material for their business. And if we could find other areas where this business park would be more compatible and have less impact on existing residents, would be great. If this site was being developed by a private developer, and nearby residents had the same types of concern, or there was a backlash from the community, the town would likely require that the developer would modify their plans to help mitigate these concerns. If they didn't take meaningful steps to address them, then you would say, sorry, you're not going to get your permits. So we appreciate, my husband and I appreciate all the work that you do as members of council for the last ten years that we've been here. I know you always haven't been on that one, but some of you have. And we've seen improvements in how the town of Colhurst runs. But sadly, we get the feeling that the town may not be willing to go through the same process that they would require from a private developer in terms of addressing concerns of residents and the community. We would like our concerns heard, and for steps to be taken to address the real and legitimate concerns that we have with how the proposed business park zoning could impact our property values and quality of life. We hope that the results of these conversations will be there with further consultation, and that we can find a win-win solution where both parties, the town and the affected residents, are satisfied with the outcome. We would love, if this is going to be behind us, we would love to have a berm back. The six-and-a-half meters is not going to cut it. It's way too close, and it doesn't give us any sort of privacy in blocking our views from what would be behind us. We worry that, or if you worry, I guess, that by taking more space to build a screen and/or berm, will make it so there is less land to sell, and thus making the project less profitable, then maybe this isn't the right spot for the business park. Few of us went around the neighborhood two nights, and we got over a hundred and ten signatures, and I'm sure you saw, of people that are opposing this. And some of these people, I'm just gonna show you a picture. Here's the proposed business park. And a lot of them are in the area, of course, right by the business park. But there's people that were contacting us all over town. This is two nights, we could have bought way more if we had gone probably over a week of this. But this is over seventy houses, and we had over a hundred signatures. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna see, can I, if we have any questions from council? Council, any questions? I do have a clarifying question about, you made a comment there about like having a private developer, like we would, we would kind of, we would stop the process or things like that. Can you tell me, like, where, like, where did you get your information from, I guess, about that? How did you come to that conclusion?
My good old husband right here.
Okay.
So with, I guess that's what's happening on Forty-Fifth, that parcel of land you have there.
Yeah.
Right, so you guys won't have a full say of what's going to happen there. Is that correct? Right?
So we're talking about like the business park location?
No, sorry, you're doing.
Green tree.
Can you even speak for me?
Yes, yes, please, yeah, if you could answer that, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, a couple things. First off, I'm not, like, I don't know all the ins and outs of the development process, so. But I was just thinking that normally, like, if there are concerns from the town or nearby residents, they would be, they'd be incorporated into that process. And there'd be ways found to help mitigate those. So, and sorry, what was the question again?
I guess I was just looking for clarification when you had indicated that, like, we just, we wouldn't allow, we wouldn't give a private developer, like, their permits. And so I guess I'm trying to compare, like, this process that we're going through now compared to what you're indicating with a private developer, and what the difference that you're kind of proposing that there is there, with the way we're doing this.
Well, no, I think the fact that the town is hearing feedback, I think, is important. And I think, I guess what I'm, what we were trying to say is that we hope that the feedback is taken and incorporated in a way that makes a difference. I was gonna speak a little bit to this in my comments as well. We've been here over ten years, and, you know, again and again, as development on that property behind your house has been brought up, or parcel access, is what it's called everywhere, you know, we've tried to express our concerns, and we've tried to talk to people, and we've, and we're not, it's not that we are totally opposed to anything going in there. Like, our preference would be that it can stay in its natural state that it's in today. But we, but we would ask that if something goes in there, that reasonable accommodation be made for the residents nearby. And so far, what we've seen in the land use bylaw that's, or the proposed land use bylaw today, is that nothing's really been done to help address the concerns that we've raised again and again over the years. So.
Great, thank you for the clarification. Appreciate that. I just, I just have some clarification. Diane, in terms of the berm, like, the distance that we had talked about, can you clarify again the distance that it was, I'm hearing like six-and-a-half meters? I thought that there was additional, I just, I guess I just want to know what that looks like.
If I can, Mayor Montina. In the plan itself, what is being proposed for rezon, so again, understanding that that's a land use district or something that's on it, so it's not a subdivision, so it's still on, there's no, none of that that's gone on, there's no area structure plan, there's no subdivision, there's no development permits. So we're kind of on step one of twenty-seven, and I think some of the details that the residents want are step twenty-seven. But what was proposed to show was that there is a twenty-meter registered alleyway that is still, would require it. that is still, would require an entire different process to close or to change or to do. And all, um, people, anytime we're doing something, either registering a road or closing a road, anyone within forty meters of that, um, registered roadway gets notification. So there is additional notification for anything of that, but that's not in any plan. Um, what was proposed is a twenty-foot or six-point-one-meter buffer, um, to solidify that, that there would be a buffer in that location. It doesn't mean if a private developer was to develop, or the town was to develop, that when the final plans, when we decided to, to figure out what that subdivision was going to look like, that that wouldn't change, and that additional zoning might be required. So, again, I think that, what I, what I am hearing is that there is, there's concern that there's no more process after this, and there's a lot of process, um, still to come.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, we'll go on to five. Is that you? All right, come on. I'll restart my clock here.
Um, yeah, so.
We'll just get you to state your name, just for, for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Stephen Dudley.
Thank you.
And, yeah, when I, uh, submitted my name to speak, I didn't realize that, uh, the email that we had sent last night would be, um, uh, discussed earlier in the meeting, so, uh, thank you for that. Um, so, I made parts of that, but also, um, I have some other comments I think I'll, I'll talk about as well. Um, some of them will be a little bit off the top.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, I, you know, I guess, so we, we've lived, uh, in, in our house on Eighth Street for just over ten years, as my wife had mentioned. We've really enjoyed living in Colhurst, we like the small-town feel. Uh, we also have really enjoyed having that property behind us and having the view that we have, uh, seeing the wildlife that are back there. Uh, when the storm pond was reconstructed back there, um, you know, it was, it was kind of a tumultuous year there with lots of dust and everything, but, you know, after the fact, it, it actually turned out to be a very nice area back there. Um, you know, needless to say, we're, we're sad to, uh, see any changes being proposed there that, that would, uh, change the state that's in. We, we quite enjoy the natural state that's in. Um, and, and I, I'll point out that, you know, Colhurst doesn't have many areas that are kind of that more natural state. Um, I, I grew up in, in McGrath, and, uh, there was an area that we called the Fish Pond, and there was a trail system down by the creek, and we really, like, that was a gem for the community. Um, I feel like Colhurst doesn't really have an area like that, but this, because there's a pond there, because it is more natural, it could kind of be that type of area. Um, so maybe that's an alternate vision for this area. Um, but I know that, um, you know, that, that option may not really be on the table. Um, I understand the town's desire to, uh, to attract more, more commercial and industrial businesses, and, and part of that would be to help offset, uh, the taxes that are going to the residents. And, and I appreciate, I mean, I, I think Colhurst does need more commercial and business. Um, but I, I do agree with what Lori was talk, uh, what she had mentioned about it seeming short-sighted to put it in this particular location. Um, I, I know that currently with, with the, uh, current town boundaries, uh, there's not a ton of options for where, uh, commercial or industrial could go. Um, but I think with some planning and some foresight, there, there are other options, but it might require, um, might require additional planning. Maybe, you know, looking to where the community might grow in the future, whether it's to the north, or to the east, or to the south. I, I think there are, are other options for where, uh, um, commercial and industrial hub could go for the community. And if it's planned correctly, you know, a lot of the, the concerns that we're expressing today could be mitigated before that even goes in. Um, so, um, I, I guess those were some of the points I wanted to make. Um, and I think that, um, you know, really, if, if, uh, if town council decides that, you know, it is in the interest of the town to, uh, to put business park in, in this area, you know, really, it's just, we, we wanna make sure that, uh, that there are things that are done to help mitigate the concerns with the, the potential for, um, the visual impacts, the, the noise pollution impacts, the property values, um, potential increases in crime, uh, light pollution, uh, and, you know, I think, you know, as been, as has been noted, uh, several times in this meeting, uh, a berm, along with some landscaping and some trees, could go a long way to help screen, uh, that area and help mitigate those impacts. Um, and, and that's what, you know, our email last night was about, was trying to provide maybe a vision for what that might look like. And, and, uh, we, we do know that there are examples in Lethbridge, uh, one of them Lori mentioned earlier. And the other one we had talked about in, in our email and sent some photos in of that. And that's, uh, the one that we talked about was on the south side of Home Depot. Um, and it helped, it effectively shelved, or, uh, not shelters, but, uh, buffers, the commercial developments for Home Depot and, uh, Best Buy and Ashley's Furniture with the homes that are located on the street to the south of that.
That's your five minutes, but, but I appreciate, I appreciate your, your comments, and thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to look to council to see if there's any questions. All right, thank you. Um, we're moving on to number, are we, are we at seven? Six, okay, six, I should have raised that tone, number six. Hello there.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to do this and to hear from the public. Of course, your work is appreciated, so thank you very much for that.
Me too. Can I do, can I say?
My name's Ellie Oskam.
Great.
And I had also submitted a letter. Um, so much of what I have overlaps with that, so I'm not going to repeat that all, but I also had the diagram of people that we talked to, over seventy homes, over a hundred signatures, uh, people who were very concerned. Um, the only other question that I had was, uh, from the time that, that I moved into town, moved here, um, just about twenty years ago, that the piece in question could not be developed because of soil suitability. Now, you, um, had mentioned something about an environmental study. Did that also address the, um, soil stability? Um, because at the open house, it was mentioned, well, it wasn't suitable for residential, because you can't really put basements in there, but, um, perhaps light industrial. Is the soil suitable even for that? And the reason I'm asking is because when they did develop the, um, storm, um, storm ponds there, uh, and it's already been mentioned, the, the coal, the dust and the shale and the coal and everything there. So is that, is that, uh, how, how did we get from, I guess my concern is, how did we get from the grant, the land not being suitable to, yes, now we can put some development there? That's a concern that I have in addition to everything that was, um, mentioned already, and I won't repeat that all, because it's all been said.
Thank you.
So, um, I don't know, are those results public, the environmental studies? Do we have access to them, or can we get some clarification on that? I'm still a bit puzzled by all of that.
Uh, I'm actually going to just, like, to just ask administration, because I would, I guess that I would like some clarity on, um, on this as well in terms of, like, the suitability of the land for not for homes, but potentially for this. And so maybe I can ask administration that question? Or, or the candidate? Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure who that would be the best for.
Yeah, it may be either Kevin or myself.
Okay.
Because I know, again, as part of Public Works, he would be the one actually completing the studies or being asked to do that. Um, it is one of those interesting things when it comes to ownership of the information. And that's, so again, would have to be, and I, I don't know the actual, um, policies of the town. So I may have to then bounce back to the other, um, side of the administration. From our side, when we look at development, if someone does it, um, for a specific reason, it, it usually is not public information, because you can have it on your own property, but someone that's your neighbor may not, or should not be able to access information about your own property. So it tends to be a little bit of that, but because it's municipal property, I'm not sure what that is. So I'd wanna see what the, um, document release policy would be when it comes to that. There is a lot of, um, difference between soil stability and an environmental assessment. And there are different tests that are done at different times during development. And so I'm sure there would have been environmental tests done when they were digging out or augmenting the, the pond that's to the, to the east of this. So again, I'm not sure how that all flows into it from a planning perspective. Um, that's an infrastructure, um, public works issue, not planning issue, so I wouldn't have been involved in that. So again, um, long story short, which I'm not sure I've answered the question a hundred percent, um, it would be based on the purpose of the request. And if it was something that was associated with your property, that may be able to be released, but it may not be on some other property. So, I don't know if you guys off the top of your head know your document retention policies and, and under what situations you would release documents.
Well, that, that's fair, I'm just, like I said, curious how, you know, twenty years ago was, you know what, this cannot be developed at all, it's not stable, not suitable. How did we get to where we are now? Um, is, is my, is my question I concern.
And, and Mary.
Yes.
Obviously, because I know that is, is Haven had indicated back, because I couldn't remember when the test had been done, but he said two thousand thirteen, so.
Thirteen or eighteen? Well, I'm, I'm.
I have thirteen written down, but.
I'm eighteen, yeah. I'm eighteen, two thousand six, so that's well before the two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, and, and if I can, so I did look, and I said, there was an area structure plan, the proving area structure plan for all of those that are in the seventh, uh, or Eighth Street. And there was environmental testing done on the soils to ensure that it was all right, because that is part of the process in order to develop the land. So if we have, if we don't have a development, we're not just gonna go out, I mean, other than the community when they, when they purchase the land, to know what they can do with it. And that would have been the, the minimum exploratory, um, things they did. If they're going to develop further, there'd be further environmental and engineering reports that would be required. Like, those are gonna be, if this was to pass, there's no shovel there tomorrow.
Right, right, I'm aware of that, yeah, I'm aware of that. Yeah, so that was, that was my concern, how we got from there to here. All right. Well, thank you very much for your, for your comments, your feedback. I think we're now at seven, okay? Uh, so number seven, please, please come and join us. Hi there.
Hi. I've been here for, oh, my name is Reginald Gale. I've been here for seven years, me and my wife. And basically, the whole entire time I've been here, I only see like a couple of stores being open. There's not very many amenities. And the place that you went to your industrial here, uh, I'm seeing that new developments going on with the houses. Right?
Yes, please.
Uh, if I could provide clarity, that's actually a plan that was created in about nineteen oh six, um, called Bridge End.
Okay.
So they have been in, in existence longer than the town.
Okay, so they're basically, they're still there then, right?
They're still there, yeah.
Okay.
And they are part of the county.
So is this gonna be developed later on too, as houses, and decide?
As far as I remember, and you'd have to look in the interminable development plan, that would likely be not.
Because I'm looking at the drawing map over here, right? And there, and you're basically, if there are, that means that the whole entire area is gonna be boxed in, right?
And again, just understanding that, and, and I'm getting, providing more information than, because again, those are questions that should be at the open house. Um, but again, just to provide clarifi, clarifying information for everyone at the public hearing.
Right.
Again, there are plans, there are, um, in the interminable development plan, because again, anything outside of our boundary
Right.
is under the control and jurisdiction of Lethbridge County.
Okay.
So we have worked together, and in that plan, there are areas for development. The town's area for development is actually, um, east and south towards Highway twenty, or Highway three and Highway twenty-five.
Right.
Because we have the lagoon still there, and that's where that big buffer is. So you can only do industrials inside that and next to that buffer. So you can't put houses there.
Yeah, because there's a.
Wouldn't make any sense to.
There's a piece of land right here, the farmer's owns it right here. Yeah, I'm just looking at, is here, later on down the road, like, let alone twenty years or so, farmer decides he wanted to sell it, and all of a sudden, a developer comes in and starts building houses. If the house, if the houses are being built, that means that it's gonna be boxed in, right? It's a square, you know what I mean, like, like an L, right? So, so.
It's, it's unfortunately not related to what we're talking about today.
Yeah, okay, now, who's gonna pay for all the roads being damaged by the trucks going by?
So I'd just like to, um, to, to clarify that the point of the, the hearing today
Yeah.
is, is for you to provide us with feedback about what you've seen. We can't actually answer any questions.
I'm, I'm, I'm seeing because this little slough that you put in this corner here, on the bottom here, uh, uh, overflow or whatever of the water there, well, that damaged a brand-new road that you just put there, uh, a little while ago, right? Right? That, that brand-new road there from going to twenty-five? Highway twenty-five there, that brand-new paved, paved road? Yeah, it's getting all beat up because of the transport trucks going by all the time, right? And, and dump trucks and stuff, right?
So, if I could clarify then, so one of the effects that you're indicating is about the, the maintenance of the road? If, if we're worrying this to the, the bylaw?
Yeah, yeah.
That's correct?
Well, the whole entire thing, I mean, you know, like, it's basically all in one, right? It's the road going right through that area, am I right?
I, I honestly, like, I can't see your map from here, so I'm having a hard time understanding exactly what you're saying. But if you, if you could put it in a sense of, like, you're worried about the roads or things like that in particular, I think that that would be very helpful for us in terms of the feedback for this.
Just, I mean, the people that lives around the area there, uh, well, to me, I work in industrial, and you're, you're doing transport trucks and dump trucks and, and all that stuff there, that's, uh, that's pretty loud. You know, I work in a loud place every day, so I mean, I gotta think, you know, and if there's movement all the time going there, you got kids running around there all the time, you got, you know, like, families, right? And usually, there's pretty quiet, and all of a sudden, you got a brewery truck driving by ten times a day. You know what I mean? So, that's all I can say.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll just look to council to see if there's any clarifying questions. Uh, thank you very much for that. I will now call number eight, please. Hi there.
Hello.
Just get you to state your name, please.
Hank Van Essen, V A N E S S E N.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I don't wanna be too repetitive, but my main question was on the transitional zoning. So just to clarify, that is just a zone that in the future could be changed? That's nothing happening with that at this point?
Yes, that is how Diane defined it earlier.
All right. Um, as far as the business part goes, I mean, I don't wanna be ostracized here and say that I'm in favor of it, because I feel like there's a lot of people against it right now. But I do wanna state that I, I'm on the side of, I feel like there is definitely a need in Colhurst for, I don't know if it's light industrial or just like commercial, like strip mall type stuff. I don't know how much light, I don't know what light industrial actually even means. Like, if, are we, are, are concrete plants allowed to, or like, what type of stuff is allowed in light industrial? Or is that the same as commercial?
I, I believe that is. I'm sorry, on the, on the back or on the front side of that paper, you flip it over, there should be the actual business park that lists the uses that are permitted and discretionary.
Okay.
And there are no concrete plants.
And that's, that's for business park, okay? And discretionary, that, that just means that it's up for debate on whether or not something like that could be allowed in. All right, well, I'll, that's all the time, I'm gonna. I'm gonna, I don't have too much else to ask, other than just the transition portion of that green space, and I'm satisfied with what I've heard.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Thanks for doing my job. Counsel, yes, I'll see if there's any questions. All right, number nine, please. Hello?
Madam Mayor.
Are you?
Come so. Diane, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Larry, good to see you again.
I know, we all know who you are, but we didn't get to state your name.
You've got to say my name, right?
I'm going to get too stated, yes.
Dennis Cassi. I just want to express my gratitude to Lori for a wonderful presentation. She said a lot of things that I want to say. So I wouldn't repeat a lot. I want to point out, I don't live anywhere near the disputed order. The land we're talking about, I don't live there. But I do have some concerns about the need for green space in the town. And I am adamantly opposed to any development by the pond or by the school. I think Diane said that it was a zone as transitional, I want it to be zoned as parkland. Totally, no discussion about it, it could be zoned, because that's a right thing to do. Having an industrial park at the entrance of a town is not a good site to have. And I'm not certain that a road is able to manage that level of traffic, potential level of traffic. It is wrong. I am so strongly opposed to this, I'll tell you. In the event that this goes through, and I hear, people are very polite here, and I'm not a very polite person, I talk my mind clearly. If this goes through, I again will run for mayor. And I will seek, like my people here, who would want to come and change this totally, because this has to remain. And whenever the mayor, we get things the right way, and I will come back and do the right way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will ask council if they have any questions. If not, we'll move on to 10, please.
I apologize. It took me a moment to unmute. I did have a question of clarity.
Yes.
Could I please get some information? And I'm not sure, would it be from our planner that I would ask a question of clarity on the last presentation? What year we started this process for our land use bylaw? And what year we were giving consideration to a business park in that region?
Yes, I'll just ask her, if she has an information. Great, thank you, Mayor Fontina. We started in 2017.
Okay. In 2017 was the beginning of our process on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Bye bye. Thank you.
All right, number 10, please.
Hi, everybody, how we doing? I'm Fred Duda. Been in Coalhurst for about 20 years now. I live in Sundance Drive. My backyard faces the field behind the elementary school. I'm not against the business park, I think we need business. But I am against the location. I know people in this room realize 6 and 1/2 meters probably hear that wall. It's very close for businesses to home. And in my house, I've had many visitors come over and come on the back deck and look out at that natural wonder, and go, oh my God. One person said, I'd pay an extra $100,000 for that view for this house. And I feel bad for these people that might lose that. Right? And then that's the beauty of Coalhurst, the natural beauty, right? So I really wish you guys reconsider that. In our parcel of land between our house and the elementary school, I've already noticed a decrease in wildlife since they built the green tree thing there. Because I think the coyotes and stuff used to come through there. But we still have so much wildlife. It's an absolute beauty, right? And I worry about, once you lose that, it's gone, right? Also, that business park, somebody mentioned about, you know, if they have a fire on the edge of town there, that's right near a pretty major evacuation route. I remember when we had the evacuations for the fires, I was at the airport working. I got to Picture Butte two hours ahead of my wife and kids from Picture Butte, because they couldn't get out of town fast enough. So that's another concern of mine too, right? Help the safety of the residents, have it right there. And I just think it's too close to town, and I feel really bad for those people if they lose what they've got. And part two of my deal here is the field between us and the elementary, it sounds like you're pretty sure they're going to be putting houses there. You sound, yeah? I have the feeling that it was going to happen eventually.
Yeah, under the current zoning, housing is permitted. What they're proposing is to change it to transitional, which would not allow housing until a plan was in place. So you're going from definite housing to no housing.
Okay. So when the plan is in place, then we have these types of discussions before it happens, again?
100%.
Okay. So yeah, I guess my bottom line is, I just wish you'd all reconsider, I just, we need business, I get it. But I don't like the location, and I feel bad for the people if they lose what they've got. And that's it, let's go, questions?
Thank you. See if council has any questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move to 11. Hi there.
Whoa. A bit of a voice problem, so I'll make it short and sweet.
Just get you to state your name, please.
Name is Randy Reber, R E B E R. And I'm standing here, just watching, these are two maps of our town here, correct?
Yes, I believe that they are, yes.
That one that appears, the one that you're transitioning, and you have that big brown square on the bottom, am I correct?
Yes.
And that's going to be transitioned too, but I don't really see it marked in here, I'm kind of surprised that that's where it's coming. And I just sort of look at it as, that's a great place for if we're going to do industrial and stuff like that, if you're commercial. And I do know we need a tax base. But I look behind the school there, I live along the canal. And it's absolutely a gorgeous green strip. If you look at this whole map, you see how the town would be built around it, and how beautiful of a park. A Henderson Park without the lake, but it's more natural. People have pointed out the animals and great things, which I've seen a decline in the animals that were in there. Thank goodness we have our beautiful hawks here. So I'm against it in a sense, because we do, and I'm not. I believe that new area, that the developers could actually put some money towards putting those green spots into our community, and also out by the ponds. I mean, once you lose it, it's gone. And I just wanted the visual of people to actually see that. I mean, that piece along the canal is absolutely the heart of our little town. So I'm hoping you guys get to actually do something and maybe go more green around that, on the bottom part that you have transitional. And I know our government gives us trees and shrubs and things. Part of this town, and I've been here for a long time, you know, some of the trees on the main street here, the dentist's worth of getting put into here and there, that kind of come from an idea from Gaff, where I'm from originally. And I believe the school should be part of the situation by putting in the trees and the shrubs and leave it natural, and let's add to the beauty of our beautiful town. That's where I'm at, so I'm kind of against it. And I do know we need money. And that big brown square would be a great place to put a lot of development, and maybe, as I've seen developers promise things, because I've been here so long, my alley was supposed to be paved, but developer went broke and things, not always done as said to be. So I look at it, I hope when we do develop that piece, we start taking some money from the developer, and not just, we should be profiting and make it more to the beauty of what we've got here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. I'll look to council to see if there's any questions. There is not? Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
I only caught up until number 11. Does anybody have 12? Or was 11 where we were at? If not, I need to get back to my script here. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that has not spoken yet, even if you don't have a number? I saw it at the back, we'll go at the back, and then we'll go over here, okay? So please come forward.
My name is Romesely Slenderland. And we talk about all of the areas that we can put industrial, light industrial area. Why couldn't that whole section be moved out by the concrete plant? That's already partially industrial. Could that not be the area that you design instead? Just my thoughts.
Great, appreciate that, thank you. Come on up if you would. Can I just stand here? Unfortunately, I need you to come forward because of the actual camera that we have here.
All I have is one question. I'm Carol Lowe, and I live on 55th Avenue.
I'm sorry, Carol.
L O W.
Great, thank you.
We've lived there for 45 years. My question is, has Alberta Environment been involved with this proposal? I'm considering the animals, the birds. I don't know if any of you have walked down there to see the birds in those ponds? They're frequenting it a lot, besides all the other animals everyone else has said that they've seen.
Yeah, and that's something, I know that we did reach out to a variety of partners, I'm not sure if that would have been one of them.
Yes, we did. If I can. Yeah, we notified several departments of Alberta Environment, and they tend not to respond. So they are not required to respond, they've been given notifications.
Okay, good. Hopefully, they will. I'm sure. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
So what about, sorry, Ducks Unlimited? They are kind of a conservation of preserving these wetlands, because they're so beneficial to the ecosystem and the.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're going to have to come up to the front here. You'll have to give us your name too, please. And I just want to reiterate that some of these questions we can't fully answer in this situation, but love your feedback as well.
So I'm Dawn Dale, the other house, Reggie. So I know there's an organic exchange scene, maybe you've seen their ads, Ducks Unlimited. So they do work with agricultural to preserve wetlands. Because they know, understand the whole ecology of the area and how it benefits farmers, but it also benefits the habitat of these special wetland areas, because they're decreasing. And pollutants get involved. And so that might be something to reach out to them and see what information they can provide to preserve that wetland that they're, is involved in that area.
Yeah, totally appreciate your comment.
They might be more approachable and available to come out and do a study and give you some background of what you can do to mitigate some of the damage there.
Great.
And those roads are crazy back there, the gravel. I've seen people just smoke right through there, you've got to yield, so then when you come down, 46 there, it's terrible. I would see the peace officer sitting there. And I hope they may get a few of these pulpards, because it's not good.
No, really.
They need to go to pave it and put some sort of better signage on that end, if they're going to run industrial through there.
Great, I appreciate that.
I think roads need to be upgraded.
Great, thank you so much. All right, again, I'm just going to see if anybody would like to speak to the bylaws. Okay. Please state your name.
Stephanie Kirsten. So I just, I am all for development in Coalhurst, so Coalhurst feels like they're outnumbered here. I am in support of us starting step one to step 27, like the planner said, of this process. I was part of the group that brought in the spray park in Coalhurst, in Imperial Meadows. And I can just state, on behalf of that process, it was super extensive, with lots of land surveying, lots of environmental stuff we had to do, because we were doing water in a coal mining town with ground, I don't know how to say anything the right way, I didn't think I was coming up here. But we did a lot of environmental studies, we had a lot of specific restrictions that we had to do to make sure that when we were building on that Imperial Meadows, that the spray park was appropriate. Kids could play in the water at the spray park over what is most of Coalhurst, which is previously coal mined land. And so I can just say, on behalf of that, that like, this is just part one of this process. I know that, I mean, maybe it sounds like this isn't just part, this is like the end all deal. I just wanted to say that maybe there needs to be some clarity around that, like the planner said. This is step one of 27, this just gets us going in the right direction. From what I understand, the land that we're talking about right now is currently listed under public institutional. Is that correct?
What piece of land are you referring to?
Lot X, I'm referring to Lot X.
Thank you.
That is currently, as it stands right now, if we didn't change anything, it is public institutional. And as the planner said, the lot, the T behind the elementary school is actually zoned as residential right now. What this bylaw is proposing is that it goes to transitional, which means we need to have more discussions about what goes into that part, and then Lot X becomes something that we can start talking about developing, just start the process about developing, rather than being public institutional, which basically means that only town buildings can go on it and/or public institutions, which I can tell you, Palisade doesn't have any money right now to build a school. That's, I just hope that provided clarity for some people.
Thank you. I'll go to council to see if there's any questions from council. Thank you very much. All right, is there anybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak that would like to speak?
I spoke, I did say something, I think.
I'm just going to check to see if there's anyone else first, and then we'll do one.
It was zoned based on when we finally had the final design for the wetland. Anything that was surplus to that is now transitioned. So it stayed transitional, we just zoned the other piece, parts of that.
Perfect. There's just, every map's a little different.
And unfortunately, I'm sorry, that the colors are not as vibrant as that one.
No, that's perfect.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's somebody else who hasn't spoken yet, I will now invite people to come forward again, if you'd like to speak. You do have, you're up to five minutes. One thing that I will note is that, please make sure that it is new information as well.
Just out of curiosity, thank you, me, because I've been here forever. That piece behind on the canal there, way back, this goes to, I know we went on your old man planning, that was, the symbol we talked in about, was way back marked as condemned to be back in to build on, before old man planning came into our situation. Is there no way we can get those old records? I kind of didn't understand when you were talking about that.
Yes, and I guess it did come to wetland. I went back to the 1996 plan, and that was still, that particular parcel was zoned residential even then. So I haven't dug any further into what was in, because again, as the community only became a village in seventy-nine, anything prior to that would have been under Lethbridge County and we don't have all those records. So it's a hamlet.
Okay, because I do remember that aspect of, like, part of the thing, right, when I bought my place, there's supposed to be a golf course there and that lake that we developed on already and canal and things change, I get it. And I definitely want commercial to come to our town. But I am concerned about the environmental, if there could be a way of checking further back on that. Would be appreciated. And I know it's in transitional, so that'll come down the road, I guess, but something to look forward to in our future meetings, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to ask if, if anyone else.
Yeah, I got a quick one.
Of, of course, come, come forward. We'll just restate your name just so that we can keep this all going on here.
I'm Sandy Gervais, lived in Colhurst for quite a long time. When I moved here, I could look out my, my back, over my back fence and see cows grazing in, in the field behind me. It's like, hung up, didn't you? Anyways, someone decided they're gonna build a low-cost housing behind us. And we all got together, just like you guys are today, and we all complained, you know what, they never developed that property till about twenty or thirty years later. So you know what, this is, this is a way to do it. And good luck.
Thank you, Sandy. Um, I'm going to just ask one more time if there's anyone else who would like to speak.
I've got my hand up, I don't know if you can hear me.
Oh, yes, Laurie, please, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanna address a few points that were brought up through all of the presentations. Um, so first of all, the note that workers need to be protected to develop that land is in your notes is very concerning to me. Uh, we were not given any protection as residents in the neighborhood when the wetlands was put in, like when the actual digging was going on. And so obviously the town knew that we need to be protected, so, uh, I'm hoping that that will show council why we are concerned and skeptical, because we were offered nothing. And we were, we were sending in pictures of the coal dust on our houses, in our houses. We had people complaining of respiratory problems, uh, down like a block away. And so the fact that you guys have a document since twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen that notes that is very concerning to me. Um, I also want to note that, um, you know, it, it said that, oh, you know, it's just the discretionary uses that are the concerns. It's the light industrial, the fabrication, the manufacturing, contractor yards, warehousing and storage. But in the handout that was handed out at, at the open house, it actually defined, I mean, I've seen the two-page handout that defines business park and I get all the uses and I actually don't really have any concerns with permitted uses. It is the discretionary uses where I have some concerns. And it's actually in the, I've got the handout right in front of me, from the open house. It says, "All uses are new, more geared towards light industrial fabrication and manufacturing, also includes contractor yards and warehousing and storage." Like, so now we're being told, and I know that the process is that, yes, we would receive notice and we would be, have a chance to go through this again if any of those uses came forward. But the reality is, for any of us who have been in that area for any length of time, and I've been here for almost eighteen years, when the RV park was, or the RV storage was expanding, we all came before you and we said, hey, we don't love this, can you do something so we don't have to look at that? And the decision in the meeting that day that was passed is that there would be an expectation that there would be some kind of privacy stuff put up by the RV storage owners, so that we weren't all looking at it. And then it never happened and about a year after it expanded, I came to the town office and I said, I was at that meeting. Like, why hasn't, why haven't they done anything? Like, there's no shrubs, there's no trees, there's nothing. And they pulled the file and they said, well, I didn't actually say that in the file. So to sit here today and to tell us, well, you know, this is, you guys are twenty-seven steps down the road, blah, 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 blah. The six meters, well, that would actually be looked at again. The reality is, none of you may be around the table making the decisions when we go to the next level. And so when we go to the next level, they're gonna go with what's on the paper. And what's on the paper is all that is legal. So if the paper says six and a half meters, that's what they're going to go with. They're not gonna go with the discussion that happens here tonight, because we saw that with the RV place. And now us on the wetlands committee are dealing with the fact that we don't love the fact that you pull into the parking lot for the wetlands and the first thing you see is the RV park and we're trying to address that. And to think that now we'll address that, but then right, you know, it'll just keep going and it'll be like industrial businesses, is not very good. So I just wanted to note that, um, I am concerned about the comment that workers need to be protected, but residents have not been given that same consideration in construction that's happened so far. And this is the first we've ever heard of it. That your handout that you're giving out to people actually outlines the areas that we are concerned about mostly. I think if I were to generalize and say I speak for most people, which is the light industrial, the fabrication, the manufacturing, contractor yard, warehousing and storage. Put in a daycare, put in all the permitted uses, like, you know, give us a proper setback, give us a, a berm and put in those. Um, if you really wanna do the light industrial fabrication, manufacturing, put it as far away from the residential as possible. But you guys are actually highlighting the ones that are most concerning as what this is going to be. Um, and then just noting that I'm, I'm not okay with you saying, oh, well, this is only step one of twenty-seven. Um, you know, we'll go through that, because I know that what's on paper is what the next people making a decision are gonna base it on. If it says six and a half meters, that's what it's gonna be. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Um, Laurie, I just have a question for you.
Sure.
From what you indicated, um, about the discretionary uses that you were like most concerned about. Is there, is there like a particular ones that, um, that, that were alarming to you?
Yes, they are light industrial, which contrary to what your planner says, is not defined anywhere. It is literally listed as just a discretionary use. So when the person asked, what does light industrial mean, and she said, oh, if you look at the business park handout, it outlines everything. That is just one bullet point on that list, there is no definition of what it means. So light industrial, fabrication, manufacturing, contractor yard, warehousing and storage. You wanna put in amusement park, put in amusement park, you wanna put in a skateboard park, put in a skateboard park. I actually would be all for any kind of active living. I'm not worried about the sounds of pickleballs on courts or skateboard wheels on whatever. I've done sound studies because I was in charge of skateboard park development for the city of Lethbridge for years. And so I know what it's like when you do a study to see what the sound effects are gonna be on close by residences. And I can tell you, a skateboard park is way less intrusive on any resident than what any of, uh, industrial fabrication and manufacturing. And not to mention that people that contacted me, they come get signatures from them on that petition, uh, live near some of the light industrial on the other side of town. And they said to us, if you could smell the glue smell at certain times of the day from one of those businesses that I won't name, because I think businesses are important. But they say that they get headaches and it affects their quality of life and they can't go outside. So that's why it's light industrial fabrication, manufacturing, contractor yards, warehousing and storage. Those things are all linked to higher crime when, um, up against residential. Those are things that require, in almost every community I talked to, a thirty-meter buffer, some as low as twenty. Nobody had heard of a six and a half meter. Uh, you know, they require berms, they require landscaping, like, like I said, I'm okay with that. I, I mean, if you do it right, if you put in the berm, if you put in the landscaping, put in a nice connectivity sidewalk that people can ride their bikes and run on and go between the dog park and the wetlands. You know, that kind of thing, but it's those, it's those particular discretionary uses which are like concerning to me, like, um, the, um, sorry, I forgot the, I got so many documents in front of me. It's like, yeah, so the light industrial fabrication, manufacturing, contractor yard, warehousing and the storage, but this, the storage, but also the shipping containers, storage as well.
Great, thank you very much for that, for that clarification. Um, I'll look to council to see if there's any additional questions on that. If there's not, um, if there's no further discussion, I am going to, oh, sorry, did you have something?
Sorry, um,
Come on up. Yeah, no, that, that's fine, um, again, just we'll just get you to state your name.
Steven Dudley.
Thank you.
Um, so, just, one, one thing I want to just bring up quick is, um, like I know around the Surry Lagoon, there's uh, that buffer zone where you can't put any residential, you know, put certain land uses. Um, I know that's currently outside of town limits, but is that, well, is that an area that the town could explore, expand into, and then using that as an opportunity to develop, uh, an area for more industrial type uses out there? Um, I know there's other options too, but that, that would make sense, it seems, because of that buffer. So.
Thank you very much. All right, if there is no further comments from, um, anyone here?
Yeah.
Of course we can, yes, please come forward. I'm just gonna get you to, no, that's great.
I've only lived here a few months. But we picked.
Can we get you to state your name first?
I need a price.
Great, thank you.
We picked here because there wasn't industrial, because it was an environment that was friendly. My husband is the guy that rides the scooter all over town because he's handicapped. And we picked here because there was green space and there was parks and there were sidewalks. I don't want him having to go through an industrial area on his scooter all by himself. I've looked at the statistics online. I've looked at the statistics about how crime rate increases with industrial areas near residential areas. I know that part of this has got to be financial, because there's a higher mill rate for an industrial than there is for housing. Surely there are other things that are also higher mill rates that could be considered that don't involve increased crime rates, increased pollution, increased impact on the environment. And I would ask that you look at alternatives to light industrial that are more conducive to living in a community that is quiet and family oriented and safe. Thank you very much.
All right. How are we feeling?
Hot.
You're going forward, you're going forward, okay, okay. Well, thank you very much. Um, I'm now going to just ask if there is any further, um, input from our senior planner or from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Montana, I don't think I have any questions. Um, I think we've heard a lot of, um, good information that, um, explains the concerns, um, that the community has. And I, I don't think there's any clarification at this time that I would be required to do.
Great, thank you. Um, anything else from council, it's all good? Mm-hmm. Perfect. All right, and I'm just going to ask if council has any, uh, questions at this point. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Montana. I guess, just for clarification for my understanding and for the public, what does the process look like going forward for, um, next steps with regards to this? Are we looking at potentially having an area structure plan for that area? What opportunities are there gonna be for future public engagement along the way?
Director, I am local W E B expert, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, um, Dan Mayer. Um, I think again, those are, there are requirements in our municipal development plan that require, um, area structure plans when development does occur. So, again, I think that that's a separate conversation than with the land use bylaw, because that, all of those details when it comes to planning and development is the next stage or step. So I don't know if that's, there's no reasonable way to put that into the land use bylaw, that's not where that type of information relies, I guess.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Nothing, all right. Um, since there is no further input, um, I declare this, this public hearing adjourned at eight oh three P M. And the regular meeting of council will resume, um, shortly. We're just gonna take a, maybe a five-minute recess here, everybody's okay with that.